All right, it's six o'clock. Good evening, everybody. We will call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public audience next. Two ways to participate in public audience. One is to send us your written comments, which we'll read. You can send those to Erica Butler, our town clerk. Her email is ebutler@simsbury-ct.gov. We ask that you send that by noon, the day of the meeting. If you'd like to appear in person on our Zoom meeting, you can always do that. We just ask that you register with Tom Fitzgerald, tfitzgerald@simsbury-ct.gov. And I believe we have one written comment tonight, and Wendy's going to read that.
Yeah, I got it. I was gonna print it, and I'm not printing, so I'm gonna read it from what word? Board of Selectmen meeting, February 8th, 2021. I am very concerned that my First Amendment rights have been taken away by Town Manager Maria Capriola, First Selectmen Eric Wellman, and the Board of Selectmen. Amendment 1 of the Constitution states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech." All submissions, including pictures, according to the rules established by the Board of Selectmen, should be read aloud during the public audience section of the agenda. However, the rules changed when I submitted pictures about town issues that did not meet the narrative of the Town Manager and the Board. Dissension is not acceptable. As my rights are diminished, their rights are expanded. This borders on communistic learnings, where the narrative is only approved if it meets the standards of the ruling party, the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Manager. First Selectmen Eric Wellman receives $10,000 of taxpayer money to trash the First Amendment of the Constitution. Eric trashed the Constitution and should have had his $10,000 withdrawn. Oh, boy. First Selectmen Eric Wellman has joined a rally with a, had joined a rally with a poster to fund the post office, has organized an event in front of Town Hall to promote Black Lives Matter, and has painted rainbows on town property to promote the LGBT community. First Selectmen stands behind his First Amendment rights to promote his agenda, but others also discussing town issues are dismissed, losing their rights. This is a grotesque sign that has remained in front of Town Hall for months, oh, there is, promoting Simsberry 350th Celebration. How many other entities can promote their objectives with signs similar to this one? I won't show the picture. I don't think I have it, but it was built by the high school students, I believe. The Board of Selectmen is comprised of electors who have their own agendas. Selectman Jackie Bados is a Realtor. She works for Berkshire Hathaway. In that capacity, she cannot offend her prospective clients, so she spends her time smiling at the Board of Selectmen meeting and goes with the flow, not to antagonize her prospective clients. This is a conflict of interest. Selectman David Payne, I believe it should be Mike, owns Payne's Rubbish Removal with a contract with the town for rubbish removal and has a contract with the town to manage the town dump. He too has a conflict of interest and has voted for Town Manager Maria Capriola's contract, a violation of Town Charter. Town Manager Maria Capriola manages the town like a despot, with First Selectmen Eric Wellman and Deputy Selectman Sean Askam drinking her Kool-Aid, with the other board members approving all the policies. There were over 50 separate boards, commissions, and meetings with town staff as support services, creating a toxic environment for the employees. Many of the staff are on call 24/7 with Town Manager Maria Capriola, texting and writing emails from early morning to late at night, placing unrealistic demands on staff. The strain on the employees' mental health and medical issues from tension will lead many of our professional employees leaving for a more productive job. It is time for town employees to vote no confidence against Town Manager Maria Capriola. A majority of the residents voted for a Town Manager. However, this administration is a train wreck. Section 410 of the Town Charter gives the Board of Selectmen investigation powers. The Board of Selectmen shall have the power to investigate any and all offices, boards, commissions, and agencies of the town, and for such purposes shall have the power to call witnesses to appear before the Board to testify and to furnish documentation on any matter under investigation, provided a properly constituted meeting of the Board of Selectmen may call before any employee or officer for the purpose of investigation or information. However, when a legitimate concern of a fraudulent investigation by the Simsberry Police Department of the internal investigation of vandalized footlocker under the direction of Chief Balter came to a conclusion that it was inconclusive, although many officers alleged that they knew that who lied, the investigation was not revisited. How can anyone believe that any of the investigations by the Simsberry Police Department are unfair and equitable? Can Chief of Police Nick Balter terminate one officer for being untruthful, and another officer gets a pass for lying under oath? The Board of Selectmen should immediately institute an investigation into the vandalized footlocker, which has the charge under the Town Charter. Justice should be fair and equitable for all, but investigations can be skewed when the investigation is rigged for or against you. The Board of Selectmen should assume their responsibilities and investigate these allegations. All of my comments and picture will be posted on Simsberry Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook.
Okay, and did we, is there anybody who signed up to speak in public audience in person tonight? I don't think so. All right, Wendy, thank you for reading that. Moving on to my First Selectmen's report. We are currently in Phase 1B. It's Connecticut's COVID-19 vaccination rollout. I don't have a lot of new information to share from our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, but I think a few points that are important. Right now, they're vaccinating people who are 75 years and older. The next group is 65-year-olds to 74-year-olds, and that's expected to begin by the end of the month. And then the final group of Phase 1B is frontline essential workers and people with underlying medical conditions. That's likely to begin in the March timeframe. There's various ways to register. One is through Vams, and the website is ct.gov/covidvaccine. We also learned recently that there are a handful of CVS Health throughout the state that are administering the vaccine, including a location in Avon starting in a few days. So you can register on CVS's website and find more information there. For anyone without internet access, you can call Connecticut's COVID Vaccine Appointment Assistance Line. That number is 877-918-2224. Dial-A-Ride will be providing transportation to the clinics in our service area. Anyone with a, if you currently have a Dial-A-Ride pass, you can call Dial-A-Ride directly. If you're not a current pass holder and would like to sign up, please reach out to Simsberry Social Services. Also, our Emergency Management Director is working with the Health District to identify suitable locations in Simsberry for future vaccination clinics, and our hope is to be able to host larger-scale clinics in town when the vaccine is more widely available. Some updates on the town budget. So we're really at the beginning of the budget process, and just some important dates I wanted to share with the community. At our next meeting on February 22nd, Town Manager Maria Capriola will present her proposed budget to the Board of Selectmen. On March 2nd, the Board of Selectmen will be meeting at 5:00, and we'll be having a discussion about the Board of Education's capital needs and learning more about those. And on March 6th, that's a Saturday, that's the Board of Selectmen's all-day budget workshop, and it starts at 9:00 AM, where we'll be reviewing the budget in detail, department by department. All of these meetings are streamed live on SCTV's YouTube channel and broadcast on SCTV's government channel. Community for Care, in partnership with the library, is hosting a virtual panel discussion on domestic violence this Wednesday at 6:30 PM. Panelists will include Simsberry's Deputy Police Chief, Chris Davis, Director of Interval House, Mary Jane Foster, Assistant State Attorney Danielle O'Connor, and Family Relations Supervisor Mary Ann Reed Gill. They'll be discussing how to locate resources, the effects of COVID-19, and how to develop a safety plan. And you can register in advance and get the Zoom link on the library's website. And I'll turn it over to Maria now, who has the Town Manager's report.
Hey, thanks, Eric. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off with a coronavirus update for you all. How we're continuing to monitor the municipal COVID alert system. We remain at red alert status at the moment, meaning that we have more than 15 COVID cases per 100,000 residents. Our positive cases for the two-week period ending January 30th have decreased a bit, which is good news to report. We decreased to 26.6 cases for 100,000 residents, which is down from 30.9 cases the prior week. Our COVID positivity rate for those being tested also decreased. It was 3.9%, down from 4.6% the week prior. With the most recent two-week period ending January 30th, we had a total of 93 positive cases, which is a decrease of 105 cases over the prior two-week period. Again, I think some good news in terms of really seeing probably our first significant downward trend in quite some time, but we had a 31% decrease in positive cases for the week ending January 30th versus the week ending January 23rd. The Farmington Valley Health District administered 400 doses of the vaccine last week, including second doses for our first responders and nurses and those age 75 and older. They were able to reschedule appointments for the Monday clinic that had been canceled last week due to inclement weather. And the Health District has also learned that the CVS in Avon will begin administering COVID vaccines on February 11th. Folks can begin registering for appointments as early as February 9th, so that's tomorrow, and we've provided a link for registering for those appointments in the Town Manager's report this evening. We did receive some preliminary data from the state of Connecticut for the time period ending January 26, and that preliminary data indicated that about 2,451 of our Simsberry residents have received their first dose of the vaccine, or about 9.7% of our population here in Simsberry. 790 Simsberry residents age 75 and older had received their first dose of the vaccine, or about 47% of that population of our residents. And I think that this number is really telling in terms of, you know, why the state made a decision to prioritize people age 75 and older. So while they represent 6.6% of Simsberry's population, and they reflect 32.2% of Simsberry residents that have been vaccinated as of that date, what we're seeing on a statewide level is that that particular age group has unfortunately had the largest, by a significant proportion, largest number of COVID-related deaths. So while they're a very small percentage of the population, very large percentage of the overall COVID-related deaths. So again, that is why the Health District at the state's direction has been prioritizing our older residents for vaccinations. Just a quick update on the tax deferral program. We received 31 applications that were approved for the tax deferral program for the payments that were due January 1st. That resulted in $315,943 in deferred revenue for the second installment. We have one commercial entity that reflected just about a third of the total deferred revenue, or a little over $103,000. So in comparison, you might recall that we had also offered that program for the tax installments that were due on July 1st. And in the summer, we had 88 approved applications and about $845,000 in deferred revenue. So we did see a downward trend, both in the number of applications received this time, as well as a downward trend in the revenue that was deferred. I also thought it would be helpful, as we're heading into budget season, to provide an update regarding the status of unemployment claims for our Simsberry residents. And as of January 9th, we had 654 individuals with active unemployment claims in Simsberry. What I'm unable to gather from the data is that those are folks who lost full-time employment or part-time employment or supplemental employment, seasonal employment. I'm not really able to get into that level of data, but again, overall, we have 654 active claims as of the beginning of the month of January. And this is down from a high of 1,418 claims that were active as of May 2nd of 2020. I did go ahead and take a look at the average of claims data prior to the pandemic beginning, so for a time period of early January 2019, right, right until prior to the shutdown. And on average, we were averaging about 125 claims a month. So again, while we're still, you know, quite a bit above that number, down significantly from the peak in May. A quick update regarding our workforce. In January, for the month of January, we had nine staff members that were quarantined at various points for coming into contact with a person that had tested positive for the virus. And we had one staff member that tested positive during the month of January. So again, just a reminder that you may, residents may experience some delays in our response times, but all of our critical infrastructure and services are fully functional and operating at this point in time. Town Hall and the library do remain open for limited walk-in hours. Town Hall, Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, and the library, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Saturdays. And we have information in the Manager's Report regarding specifics about appointments for services and online services at those facilities. Next, I would just like to let folks know that we are expecting inclement weather tomorrow, so we have directed our staff that are able to work remotely to please do so. As a result of the inclement weather, the library will be closed tomorrow, Tuesday, for walk-in visitors due to the inclement weather. We have also rescheduled Tuesday. Tuesday was scheduled for tomorrow. We have rescheduled Tuesday to Wednesday. We did reach out to our clients and are trying to spread the word to make sure that folks are aware of that change in schedule. Under Selectmen Business, there are two items tonight that I would like to ask be added to the agenda. The first, Selectman Mike Payne reached out and asked if we could add a discussion on Senate Bill 171 to the agenda this evening. We did go ahead and send some supplemental information to board members this afternoon that we'll be happy to discuss this evening and post online tomorrow for residents that may be interested. And this item can be added to tonight's agenda with a 2/3 vote of the body. The second item we're hoping to add tonight is that we're happy to report that we have finalized the RFP process, and we've tentatively agreed upon a lease with our selected vendor, the Shea Hospitality Group, and this is for our golf course restaurant. We, you know, view the completion of this project as a very positive step forward for the golf course and the Parks and Rec Department. And the vendor has a good reputation for being a quality operation, and our rent payments will increase after the first year. The vendor is anxious to begin their work in our space, so if we are able to provide an overview to you this evening that you feel comfortable, we'd be very glad to proceed. But we also understand that if you need more time to process the information, that we could have you take final action on that at your next meeting. But this item for discussion can also be added with a 2/3 of both this evening. For Department News and Notes, I'm very happy to report, and also want to thank both Melissa Appleby and Amy Maryweather for their very good work. The three of us, along with Rob Pomeroy, we were part of a recent bond rating review with Standard and Poor's. We did get the rating review back, and they confirmed, and I should say reaffirmed, our AAA bond rating. So that's very good news for the town. They cited a number of points for us, such as very strong management team, very strong economy, very strong debt and contingent liability position, very strong liquidity, et cetera. There were many factors that they cited for reaffirming that, that should help us with getting some strong interest from particular investors and hoping to ensure a competitive interest rate when we do go out for a bond sale later this month. You may recall that we previously bonded for about half of the costs associated with the Henry James renovation, and we now need to do the other half of that project. So again, many thanks to Amy and Melissa, and glad to report, glad to report that we did so well. From our Police Department, want to wish Lieutenant Fred Siffo very, very well wishes in his new position. He decided to resign from service after 24 years with the town, which is just a remarkable tenure, and he has taken the position of captain with the Cromwell Police Department. You know, it was so hard to lose somebody like Lieutenant Siffo. He has just been so incredibly dedicated to this town, the department, our larger organization. He was a true embodiment of community policing. He was our very first-ever school resource officer. He worked closely with many community organizations and with many town departments. Again, I just can't say enough about him as a person and all the good things that he's done for our community. I'm always sad to see, you know, see folks like Lieutenant Siffo go, but at the same time, I'm so happy for him because this is a really special professional growth and development opportunity for him. So best of luck to him, and hopefully he will, he will be happy in his new position. And lastly, from our library, the Friends of the Library have resumed the Books to Your Door Home Material Delivery Service on a biweekly basis. And some also good news to report. We were able to install the Everbright Interactive Panel in the children's room, and you may recall that that purchase was made possible through a Peg Piesa grant that we had received. So nice, nice to see that happen. And that concludes my report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Fran. I'll see if there's support to add a couple items to the agenda. Mike was interested in adding a conversation on SB 171 to the agenda. Would there be a motion to add it?
I'll make that motion, Eric, seeing how I brought it up.
Fair enough.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries. Why don't we put that at the very end of Selectmen Action? And then the, the restaurant lease, would there be a motion to add that item to the agenda?
So moved.
Chris seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries, and I'll do my best to remember that that is going to be the new item D, just to keep it sort of somatically appropriate around Simsberry Farms. Okay, moving on now to Selectmen Action. Item A, Simsberry residents Mark and Diane Orinstine have made a generous donation to the town to assist residents affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021, to accept the donation from the Orinstine family in the amount of $1,565 for the purpose of supporting Community and Social Services Department programs and helping residents affected by the COVID-19 pandemic?
I'd make the motion. I'd like to say thank you to them for the donation and all the work that Mark has done for the committees in town and SCTV.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item B is the proposed 2021 aquatic facilities and day camp fee schedule. So our thanks to Tom and your team, and also Dave Bush and Culture, Parks, and Rec for being part of this process. In this case, the proposal is for a modest increase in some of our aquatic facility fees and summer camp rates. And this is really mostly due to offset costs due to the minimum wage increase. We're talking about $5 or $10 increases depending on the program. Tom, what else would you want to add to this recommendation?
No, that's a pretty good, high-level overview. We were seeing additional costs related to pool chemicals as well. We feel that the rate increase that we're proposing here basically will meet our needs for those two expenses, minimum wage and pool chemicals. We do, we do benchmark ourselves against other departments. We also, you know, benchmark ourselves against ourselves based on past participation numbers when coming up with the revenue increase needed to support the additional expenses.
Thanks, Tom. Dave, is there anything else you wanted to share?
We were unanimous in these recommendations, Eric, so Tom and his staff did a great job. I would simply ask that you approve them.
Are there any questions from the board? Wendy?
I have a question. So if, and not that we hope this just doesn't happen again, but last year we had to like relook at all this, right? Because when we got into COVID, you know, with the scaled-down attendance, would these rates hold if, you know, you know, God help us, if we have the same kind of situation this year?
So that's a good question, Wendy. Last year, last year, we did hold the rates. We did, yeah, as your, your board and Board of Finance reviewed them. We did not lower the rates due to reduced capacity or anything like that. We are basing, what we did is we took our four-year average and about 80 to 85% of our expected attendance or capacity at the pool. That's what we're basing this on. If we're at 100% capacity, we'll exceed the revenue expectations, especially on the daily walk-up. Thank you, David. But, you know, being, being practical, six months out from the potential pool opening, you know, and watching, you know, kind of the landscape of things, you know, it's, it's hard to guess that we're going to be at 100% capacity, but we think we'll be somewhere in between where we were last year and where we should normally be in a non-COVID year. So hoping things open up as the summer goes on, but I, we're going to guess that we're going to be allowed to be at about 85, 90% capacity possibly, you know, if things go really well. So using those numbers, that's, you know, and the four-year average is how we came up with the needed revenue.
So basically, it's factored in, like, right?
Like, I did. I, you know, I factored it in when I said, when I.
That was really what I was just wanting to know.
Yeah, and if we're at low, if we're at a lower capacity, obviously, our, our expenses go down somewhat as far as the number of staff that we need on duty, but the minimum wage rates, minimum wage increases are really affecting what we do, or what the, the cost of service to the community. It really is, whether it's day camp, golf, or the aquatics program and rank. It's, it's really going to be hard to continue to hold rates where we have been without some, you know, some kind of ease in that.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Sean, I see you're trying to get in.
Yeah, just because I know it's going to come up. Tom, just confirm the entirety of the minimum wage increases in here, or is?
No, just the rate for this year, Sean. We go, we go to $13 an hour. We're at $12 an hour. We go $13 August 1st, and then July 1st of next year, it goes to 14, and then somewhere nine to 10 months after that, it goes to 15.
So, but for our cost this year, the entirety is in there. So what it goes to is, is fully recognized in the increase. We're not subsidizing it somewhere else. Our, our expected cost increase is entirely accounted for.
In this fee increase, yes, it is.
Okay, just because, you know, we've had this discussion at the subcommittee level. Are we, who's paying for it? And just to be clear, the, the users are paying for the entirety of the minimum wage increases.
At this point, yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. I was 99% sure. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you, sir.
Good question.
Appreciate it.
Are there other questions from the board? Is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021, to approve the 2021 fee schedule for aquatic facilities and day camp programs as presented?
I'm with it.
I'll second.
Chris seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I love how we're talking about this a day ahead of another snowstorm.
The pool will be a little chilly, but.
Yeah, well, right?
We're optimists, guys.
They do that in Norway and Sweden, right? Don't they have like ice swimming? It's supposed to be good for you, so.
IMC is the proposed fee schedule for the golf course for the coming season. Golf course staff is proposing, again, a modest increase in fees. They conducted a review of similar golf courses. The recommendation is for $1 to $2 in some greens fees, and then $25 to $50 for season passes, and then $1 to $2 increase for golf cart rentals. Tom, anything you would want to add there?
No, thank you, Eric. Very similar to the previous conversation. We do benchmark against the other local municipal courses, which we use Rockledge in West Hartford, Stanley, New Britain, Hunter, Timberland, and Keeney and Windsor. We are, these proposed rates will get us to the upper third of our competition, and we feel that's about where we should be based on our location, what we have, what we have to offer here. The season pass rates happened, you know, we did see an increase last year as well. And our big drivers in our expenses are contractual increases to our full-time, full-on, part-time staff, as well as signing a new contract with our golf pro, which will be coming up soon. He's well overdue for some increases with us. So factoring all of those things in, we feel that the revenue projections based on these increases will, again, keep us where we need to be.
Thanks, Tom. Are there questions from the board?
I have one question. And you're just going to remind me, because I may have asked this last year. So I know we don't have any resident special rates, you know, like in the day-to-day. And the only thing that stood out to me, and it's probably been like this, is the season passes.
And the only thing that stood out to me, and it's probably been like this, is the season passes, we have senior non-resident, junior non-resident, but adult is just straight across, right? I just
No, there is an adult, um, there is an adult limited. I'm sorry, hold on one second. Yes, you, you are correct. We do not offer a non-resident season pass.
Okay.
Yes.
And has that, has it been like that for the last few years or did we have one?
Uh, no, I believe we used to have one, yes.
Okay. I just was curious why there was some for one and not for the others.
Yeah, you know, we did off, we did, when we went to the one-rate plan a few years ago, we did Yeah. eliminate the non-res, the non-resident daily walk-up fee, but we kept, uh, so the residents basically get a season pass break on their daily fees if they choose to have a season pass.
Okay.
And many of our residents who do, you know, take advantage of that quite often, you know, they do take advantage of their season pass throughout the season.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Okay, let's see if I can find the motion. Is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021 to approve the 2021 fee schedule for the Simsbury Farms Golf Course as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And while we're sticking with Simsbury Farms, the next item on the agenda is the Simsbury Farms Golf Course Restaurant Lease. And this one was a late addition to the agenda, so I'd like to spend a little more time walking through this one. Tom or Maria, who wants to take this?
I can start, Maria, if you like. So, so I'm, I'm very excited to tell you that we have selected a new vendor. We had six proposals for this. I did a lot of, I did 10 tours of the facility during the RFP process for potential vendors. All but two of, all two of those were local, uh, local businesses who were interested in the facility. There's been a lot of excitement created around the golf course the last couple of years. The conditions of the course are phenomenal, uh, obviously with COVID this year and golf being allowed to operate somewhat normally. It was a banner year up there. We had 42,000 rounds, which was just phenomenal. We hadn't hit those numbers in, in many, many years. And, you know, a lot of the potential vendors that came in are, you know, because of the outdoor seating availability that we have, they see it as a, as a a good alternative for their restaurant business and a good extension of, I guess, a good extension of their business. And looking to kind of generate some momentum, you know, in the limited marketplace right now. Out of those six proposals, three were selected by the, by a mixed team of our rec commission members, our, uh, golf staff, myself, and as well as Rob, uh, Bob Crowther from EDC and Sarah Nielsen. They were extremely helpful in setting up the RFP and, and getting us through this process. So a lot of good ideas came in. We did a survey of our golf, uh, and Simsbury Farms patrons last fall to find out what they were looking for. That was very helpful to the, uh, to the potential vendors as well. But through the process, Shay Joseph just exemplified professionalism and enthusiasm for what they could do up there, what we, what they could offer, and just really making the restaurant a, uh, a destination, not only for our golfers, but for others that are using the complex. They are looking at some, some future renovations and changes to the facility, which we think would be certainly beneficial to the business. But for years, the, the restaurant has been kind of the drag on the golf course the last couple of years for a number of reasons, you know, weather, it doesn't make a difference who operated it. But we really feel like the, the energy and excitement and ideas that they have proposed to us will really kind of make, uh, just be one more great addition to the golf course. We've got a solid team in place with our new superintendent. Certainly having John Berengia and his pro staff back for the next five years will be a benefit to us. And the excitement that they have and in partnership, working with the new restaurant folks, we really see good things for Simsbury Farms Golf Course over the next decade. It's, we're in a really good place right now if we, as we move forward.
Thank you, Tom. Can I just ask Dave from Parks and Rec, because I know that your commission played a role in this process. Is there anything you wanted to add about the proposed tenant?
These, these folks, um, are just going to be a complete asset to our golf operation. They are professionals. They are used to running not only a, you know, a wedding venue, but they're already running a golf venue in Wilbraham, Mass. It was, it was, it was such an easy decision to select these folks from really a, a group of other qualified candidates. We are, we are truly looking forward to the opportunity to work with these people, especially as we look forward and let them tell us what they might be able to do that we are not doing right now. So I, I just, to all the selectmen, I would simply encourage you to approve this contract. We are excited that Shay Joseph is, you know, as we all know, that, that outfit's been around for years. But their manager is top-notch. Uh, their team is top-notch. So let us, let us run with them. You know, we're looking forward to it.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Maria, were you going to add anything?
Yeah, I would just like to add that in terms of the financial impact, the proposal that they submitted was very competitive. And year one, essentially the annual rental income that we would receive, it would remain flat. However, over the duration of the agreement, the rental income we would receive would increase each year for the remaining four years of the contract. So again, felt that that was competitive as well. And we did take our existing lease with the former vendor and worked with our town attorney on a number of housekeeping updates. And Melissa assisted out as well in terms of working with our insurance carrier to make sure that they were comfortable with liability insurance of the vendor, et cetera. So all in all, I think it was a really good thorough process from start to finish. And are quite excited about the vision and enthusiasm that the new vendor brings to the restaurant.
Thanks, Maria. Sean?
So Maria, respects to housekeeping. I assume we cleaned up the, the lease language to not have issues in the form of signage show up any further at, at a town facility. And again, not passing judgment on said issues that were displayed. But again, at town facilities, we've better remain by, unbiased, right? So political displays or otherwise really can't be part of that. So I assume that's been addressed?
Yes, yeah. That's an example of a housekeeping update. We also, just because of our current pandemic environment, added some, some language around that under compliance with law. Something else we're really trying to tighten up regarding folks who lease our space is ensuring that there's a very clear understanding that they cannot engage in work that's permitted work without our permission as the property owner and that all proper permits must be received and that we must approve of any contractor that's going to be doing work in our, in our building or on our facility. So that's something we felt that was really important. And as an example of the types of housekeeping updates, we did this around.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I assumed you'd be on top of it, but just given the challenges that most of the folks in this group face this summer, again, regardless of our thoughts on the issue. You know, it's just, it's not what our role is in terms of policing people's individual thoughts and we shouldn't be getting involved in that. So I appreciate you looking at that. Thank you.
No, and Sean, I appreciate you brought that up because I think that is something that needed to be, the details are important and I appreciate you bringing it up.
Are there other questions from the board? Okay. Is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021 to authorize the town manager to execute the proposed lease agreement for the Simsbury Farms Golf Course Restaurant with Shay Hospitality Group LLC?
I'm moved.
I'll second it.
Mike, second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You don't get a vote, Dave.
Oh, but I do, I do. I want me, I, I want this new year to start. So thank you, guys. No, really appreciate the support.
Let the record reflect that one member of Culture Parks and Rec voted in favor.
Thanks, Dave. Good luck.
Thanks for all your work on this and
No, and board of selectmen, all of you, all of you members, thank you for your support of Park and Rec this year and last year. Just, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care, Dave.
Item E, we have tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $62,606.2 and authorize town manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
I'm moved.
Second, second.
Uh, is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. For item F, we have our quarterly budget status report and some other finance-related items. I'll turn it over to Amy Meriwether. Hey, Amy.
Oh. Hi, guys. So I'm just going to walk you through some of the highlights tonight. First, starting off with our general, general fund as usual. Just on the revenue side, a couple of highlights here. Um, our building department has already exceeded by almost $322,000. So as Maria was saying, that our bond rating agency really loved our economy and how it's growing. Things haven't slowed down here. So some good news on our, on that side. Unfortunately, the finance department is kind of bringing it down. Our interest income is only at $32,000 thus far and we budgeted $400,000. Um, I think it's safe to say we will be not be meeting that budgetary estimate, but thank God for the building permits, right? Down under the town clerk's revenue, as you know, that we have seen an increase in the housing boom during COVID. So our conveyance fees and our recording fees are above estimates thus far. Our conveyance fees are at 80% of budget and our recording fees are already a little over budget. So we are likely to exceed budgetary estimates there by the end of the year. Um, a couple of smaller items we have, there's only about $7,000 that we budget for the rental of Eno Memorial Hall. And, um, we have some library fees that are likely not going to hit budgetary estimates. Nobody's renting out Eno. And the library is only open partial hours. Oh, and then I forgot the most important thing overall. So we are at $67.3 million in revenue to date or 64% of budget, which is typical for this period of time. Onto, um, general fund expenditures. So we are about $51.7 million or 50% of budgetary expenditures. As Maria said, we did have our bond reading call and as part of that call, they do ask us to provide some year-end estimates. So I will share with you all what I shared with them, some highlights on the expenditure side. Currently, we have some vacancies in the following departments, the police department, planning, town clerk, social services, and the senior center due to retirements and staff transitions. So I am anticipating about $80,000 in savings related to those, um, those vacancies thus far, and that does not include benefits. So that is a very conservative estimate. Under conferences and education, obviously during COVID, we are not, um, attending as many conferences and not, um, not needing hotels, airfare, things of that nature. So I'm anticipating that we'll have about $50,000 in savings related to those items. And then on the COVID front, we have spent about $57,000 in COVID-related expenditures to date through year end. I'm anticipating about $80,000. And again, I don't think it'll be that high, but it's a very conservative estimate. We'll see what happens with the, uh, the referendum. So the net effect on the expenditure side is a surplus of about $50,000. So based on that, we will not be exceeding our, um, our budgeted expenditures and therefore we will not need a supplemental appropriation on the town side for the COVID-related expenditures. In total, between our revenues that I spoke to you previously that are going over budget, we have a little bit of, um, savings on the expenditure side. And then also, as you know, we typically budget 98.5% of the collection rate. We typically collect at 99.5%. So with all of those items put together, I'm anticipating a surplus this year of around $600,000. Any questions on the general fund?
No.
Moving on to the Parks and Rec Fund, you'll see through December 31st, we have a surplus. Our revenues have exceeded our expenditures of about $114,000. You'll note as in the, um, like with the last quarter, the recreation programs and the Simsbury Complex Program, Simsbury Complex Programs are down in accordance with budget, um, obviously due to COVID. And then you see a corresponding decrease in the expenditures as well. So the majority of that $114,000 is due to the golf program. Moving on to the health insurance fund, um, our revenues have exceeded our expenditures by about $727,000. Um, I just wanted to point out on the claim side that we budgeted 14.7 million and currently we're at almost 6.3 million halfway through the year. So just quick math and doubling that up that, um, we will likely not hit budget, which would be amazing. That would be almost a $2 million savings. As of right now, we have $5.1 million in, um, in reserves. That is 34% of our expected claims. As I've said prior, 20 to 25% of expected claims is the target of where we want to be. And if we do continue at this rate for our claims and have, um, ha, we do see that savings in the claims will probably be around 40% of expected claims by the end of the year. So we will be looking at that during our budget review.
Amy, a quick question there. I believe we've done in, in cases such as this in the past, a premium holiday or other options. I don't know if we're potentially, and again, I don't want to get folks excited, but I don't know if that's on the table later in the year, especially with all the challenges our employees have had and such, you know. It looks like you're ahead of me on that one, but
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great question. Um, so we actually are anticipating, um, looking into it. We are meeting with our consultants, uh, not this week, but next week. Um, and we are going to get a feel for how they see the market going because as you recall during COVID, everybody canceled their doctor's appointments, put things off, things of that nature. So are we going to be looking at a big spike? Initially, they had said no. So if they still feel that way, yes, that will be discussed during the budget process to give a holiday to, um, not only town budget, but staff as well.
I appreciate that. Thank you for looking into that.
Uh, I think that's all I have for major updates unless somebody else has any specific questions on anything that's in the packet.
Other questions? Sean?
Just on, on, back to Maria's comments and obviously, you know, you were a, a big player in the, uh, the review with, with S and P, you know, from, from your experience and, and from the sounds of it, um, just talk us through the, the, the rating in a little bit more in-depth. If I'm getting this correctly, one of the highest places we were scored was the quality of management in town. That's true, right?
Yes, that is an accurate statement. Um, they, it feels weird to like brag.
No, you do. I asked you the question. I'm going to make a point after, but go ahead.
We did, we, um, we got one of the highest, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this or not. It was insinuated and I am not going to, um, say it was confirmed because it was not, but it was insinuated that we have the highest management score in the state of Connecticut.
Yeah.
Um, and that it would be from me, myself, Maria and Melissa that participated in the call. So the way that the presentation is done, they are very impressed with our, um, the spreadsheets that we do for the budgeting, the capital, the planning, the, um, the estimates that we give them, just like the, the conservative nature of the year-end estimates that I gave them. Some of the other things that they pointed out, they love Mike's presentation that Mike had prepared for the economic, um, update. And then also on the financial analysis, they said it's typically very hard to get out of, um, you know, what is financially driving their year-end. So they'll look at the 2020 audit and they'll go through and they want to know why things went up and why things went down. We're very specific in why things happened, how we incorporate our policies into our budget modeling. So those are just some of the highlights that, that, um, you know, as we go through the call that they did mention.
Yeah, no, and, and I'm glad you went through that and it's not bragging. It's, it's, it's pointing out what I think the, the six of us and, and many know that we have outstanding management, um, you know, both in the finance office and in the town manager's office, you know, and that includes Melissa, obviously. And that's really important. And when residents ask, you know, you know, how do we measure success? What are we looking at for different things? There's a lot of subjectivity. Those goes into what we do, but this is, this is pretty important in that an outside independent agency, S and P comes in and applies a rating basically to the quality of the three of you with, with how you're managing the town financially. And to get the rating you did is, is substantially important, not only to, to the, to us here on the board, but also the taxpayers, right? Because that translates in, in, in large part into a better, a better interest rate and ultimately lowers, you know, our burden for the next 10, perhaps longer years as we look. So we're having this really important capital conversation. How do we push boundaries perhaps on 7% or 8%? And, and I want the residents to feel, um, the same trust and confidence I have in the three of you guys. Because again, it's not just listening to me. This is an independent agency that's affirmed what we know. Um, and again, it, it's important to highlight this because I think folks often get confused by what role does the finance department what role does the finance department have in my life? What role does the town, I mean, the town manager does what? You know, it's, we know what you folks do, but I think this is really important. And I get really excited about the financial side. But this stuff really, really does matter, right down to the tax bill that we all write every six months to this community, and it makes a difference. So thank you for your leadership on this space, for the work ethic that you guys put in, how seriously you take it. You know, and also to this board and the Board of Finance and the Board of Education, because I think there's a lot of professional volunteers that help support you guys, right? We pass the policies you recommend. We do the things you advise us to do because they're smart fiscal prudent policies and you guys are the experts. So I appreciate all you've done there. And again, it's no surprise to me that you got this rating, but again, I wanted to make sure that the folks at home and others hear how important this is. So well done, guys.
Thank you. Could be something we consider incorporating into a future news and announcements if that were appropriate.
You know, I think we should, Eric. Again, you know, the financial stuff is often not flashy and exciting for folks, but this translates into what happens in your pocket. Right? And it's, you know, we talk about how much, you know, we do the graph with how much our tax increase is a cup of coffee and all that stuff. Well, this stuff saves you more than a cup of coffee. So it's, I think it's important.
Yeah. Thanks, Sean. Were there other questions from the board before we move on? Okay. You're very well set, Sean. Thank you. I want to see where we are. Okay, so this is item H. This is a, no, I'm sorry. It's item G. The Board of Education use of the non-lapsing fund for COVID-19 related expenses. So our understanding is that the Board of Education incurred about $850,000 in COVID-related expenses and staffs. Proposal to cover much of that would be using the non-lapsing fund. Amy, could you walk us through this?
Yeah, so slight correction. So the $850,000 is accurate, but they did receive some grant funding. So a lot of those expenditures have been able to be moved out of their operating into their grant fund. So they have some, I think they've had $375,000 thus far coming in for grant funding that they're able to utilize for this deficit. They also have another $430,000 coming in, I believe in the April timeframe. Some of that we would like to use to offset fiscal year '21, but that money is, it can be used for fiscal year '22 as well. And there are a lot of intervention programs that the Board of Education is discussing. There are some students that are struggling with the distance learning, and so they are talking about a summer program perhaps, or some other ways to help utilize those dollars for next year. So we don't know if we'll be spending all of that. So in order to offset that $850,000, we've done a couple of things. So we've instituted a spending freeze. That's something that other districts around us have done as well, just to reduce the burden of COVID. And then anything above and beyond that, yes, we would like to be granted permission to utilize that non-lapsing fund of the $651,000. And if you recall, at the end of last fiscal year, $266,000 of that was actually put into the fund, knowing that we were going to have these exorbitant COVID costs for this year. And then there was already $385,000 in that fund. So we're hoping not to have to use it all by the end of, by year end. We don't know what the spending freeze is going to give us as far as surplus thus far, but if we have to use it, we would like to be able to utilize it to cover our COVID costs.
Thanks, Amy. Other questions from the board on this item? Is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021 to approve the use of the non-lapsing fund for COVID-19 related expenditures in an amount up to $651,308?
I'll move that. One second.
All right, Sean moved. Mike seconded. Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. And sticking with finance, item H is a supplemental appropriation request for the Farmington Valley Health District. This is really important. The Health District has been just an invaluable resource to Simsbury and all of its member towns through the COVID-19 pandemic. And, you know, what they've done with modest resources is incredible. Just to give our residents an idea, they have been really involved in every decision that we've made from how to safely open the schools, how to safely open farms and the golf course, and working with area businesses on COVID protocols. And that's on top of everything they're supposed to do in a normal year. And the town received a little over $180,000 in coronavirus relief funds. And none of this money was distributed to health districts. So the Health District has put together a proposal and a request for just under $30,000 from Simsbury and as well as from other towns that make up its membership. Amy, could you talk to what the Health District is asking for and what they would propose to do with this additional money?
This request actually came through to Maria, so I will let her.
Maria, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so as you know, the Health District has been on the front lines of response to the pandemic. And of late, they have been expending a significant amount of resources, both staff time as well as utilization of volunteers to assist with contact tracing and vaccination efforts. And as they're gearing up to provide vaccinations on a much larger scale, they went back and put together a plan in terms of what their needs would be for about the next six months, particularly again in the areas of both contact tracing and vaccination efforts. And then from that plan that was in your packet, they have proposed assessing the 10 health district towns on a proportional basis, based on our population. So that's consistent with the methodology that they use on an annual basis as part of their budgeting process. Last, we spoke as a group. Several of the towns had already supported the appropriation request. And many others had indicated that they suspected that their boards would also be supportive of their request. And I certainly felt that the request was very fair and reasonable, given their current set of circumstances, and hope that you all will be supportive this evening.
Okay, thanks, Maria. Are there questions from the board?
And just a comment, Eric. I mean, I looked at the, you know, the breakdown on the per capita contribution, the source of where the money would be going to in terms of contact tracing, et cetera. So I mean, I agree. This, I can't believe honestly it's only this. I would have, I honestly would have thought it might be more given the work that these folks have done. And I, you know, I'm happy that we're in a position to do it, and I hope our member communities are as well. And, you know, again, I don't understand why there's not an executive order for this. You know, and this is not a political statement. It's a, you know, this is at the basis of keeping folks safe, and it's just, it's confusing to me that it's being done at the local level where there's a lot more subjectivity. You know, I know we do a good job here, and I'm sure other member communities will as well, but it's, it just seems like this could have been handled at the state level, you know, months ago.
Eric, I'd echo what Sean just said. Having dealt with them, the Health District has been a phenomenal resource, and I can't imagine how many other people they helped at the individual personal level. It's not that I'd be excited to spend more money, but they're worth it. It's been great.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Other questions are coming? Okay, is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021 to approve a supplemental appropriation for additional funding for the Farmington Valley Health District in the amount of $29,818 for their continued efforts in relation to their COVID-19 response?
I'll move that. One second.
Wendy seconded. Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. And we come to item I, which is a supplemental appropriation request for the Simsbury Spirit Council. We have a number of members of the Spirit Council on with us. Co-chairs Cheryl Cook and Nicole Kodak. The Spirit Council, you know, for anyone who doesn't know, is a town committee that's focused on issues around diversity and inclusion. And two of their areas of focus is one, engaging the larger community in this work, and two, collecting data so that we're able to assess progress toward goals around diversity and inclusion. And they've come to us with a mid-cycle request of $5,000 so that they can really get started on this work. Who should I turn it over to for a little more context?
Eric, you mind if I just start and then?
Yeah, sure.
Just, and I had let my colleagues, you guys here, know that this was coming. It was something that was born out of a discussion I shared about a month, month and a half ago with the Spirit Council when I was able to attend. You know, and again, it's important work that we all know, and as you all remember, we all ranked the the efforts to the Spirit Council and making sure that our community was diverse and inclusive very, very high in terms of our list of priorities for this year. So I know there's going to be an additional request within the budget, but again, didn't want these folks to have to wait until July 1st, July 2nd, when there's a lot of good work and a lot of momentum now. And, you know, I believe, you know, they're going to tell you a little bit more about why the requests here are coming in. And it's not really marketing. You know, it's what it's been tagged at, but it's really raising awareness of the conversation, which they educated me on is a really critical piece to making progress. And then Eric, as you know, and others, in any good space, if you want to measure progress, you have to know where you started. So I think these are thoughtful requests. And Sherry and Nicole, if I said anything out of line there or didn't set it up properly, please do correct me, but go ahead.
Not at all. Thank you, Sean. And we very much appreciate your support and the support of the rest of the board in our work here. I think Kristin Formanek is on this meeting too, and she will tell you, because she gets victimized by us all the time. This group works around the clock to do this work because we feel so strongly about what we can do, what the possibilities are, and that by doing this work, we make Simsbury a better place. So I think that while Kristin would classify us as over enthusiastic at times, we are, we tend to go out and do the work as fast as we can and as thoroughly as we can. And that's why we're coming to you tonight, because we are so anxious to get started with our important mission. And you are quite right that we usually do not refer to this as marketing. We refer to it as public awareness, because as we have developed our monthly Let's Talk series, we have found that a lot of people do not understand what it is we do, why we're here, why it is important, why the town thinks it's important enough to make us the town committee. And I think we need to, you know, sharpen our message and get the word out that we want everybody to be included in this process. And that's what we're trying to do. I'm going to let Nicole pick up the ball on the data request. Hi, Nicole.
Hey, guys. Tanisha was here too. She just had to jump off at 7 for the Police Commission meeting.
Very many hats.
Yes. So, yeah, the budget request, this really is something that is sort of a indicated action right out of the resolution that we adopted declaring racism a public health crisis. And it calls for data and measuring to hold ourselves accountable for where we are and the meaningful things that we want to track and then inform our progress. We could do our best to try to put together some surveys. Data Haven and all of the other organizations that have data don't go down when you disaggregate it enough at our town level and within our town across our constituents broken up by race or ethnicity to have enough of a valid read. So we have an expert, Rick Brush, who's on the data subcommittee with us, and he's very, very connected. We're very active with other towns and groups giving webinars. I participated in one with several of our members today on the data that will help drive this forward. But really, I think we, they've concluded we need a partner to help us have the meaningful right things to measure so that we're not saying a year from now, oh, gosh, that's not what we want to compare ourselves to now. We're going to start over with the right questions. Want to just do it right from the beginning. So we're very open to collaborate and are already doing so with other towns. I know Maria had written that in her cover note. I think that makes a lot of sense. But we just need someone to help us be that expert that will be working with the other towns and say, here are the meaningful things, qualitative, quantitative, that you already have and that you really should really start to gather and collect.
I should have touched on the collaboration note. I apologize for that, Maria. We welcome the opportunity to collaborate with EDC. I think we mentioned that in our update a couple of weeks ago. We can wait for an invitation. That's not usually our style. We usually just go out and insert ourselves in these conversations. But we are, we are happy to do that. Our outreach subcommittee is in the process of doing presentations to various groups around town. So we would definitely make ourselves available to do that. We have worked with, you know, the person whose work you see in our proposal for, you know, on an informal basis. He has also dedicated a great deal of his time on a volunteer basis to the town and other projects. And it has been terrific. We have also touched base with Simsbury Main Street Partnership, who has written a letter of support for their willingness to partnership with us and grant applications, which we have already started to do with the library. I think you probably saw one of those at your last meeting. So we are most definitely open to collaborating wherever we can to maximize impact and the use of dollars.
I think we have the opportunity to do something special here, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate your work, Cheryl, Nicole, Tanisha, every member of the committee, and of course Kristin, who is largely behind the scenes, but is playing a critical role at a staff level to make sure this work moves forward.
She is.
Did you want to jump in, Kristin? You're on mute. It's the old double mute.
Maria, while she's coming off mute, do we have a hazard pay provision in Kristin's contract?
Oh, my goodness.
Having worked with Sherry, I'm not implying anything, but you know.
Unfortunately for Kristin, she has me on Community for Care too, and it's really, you know.
You know, but all jokes aside, I mean, you're right. It's a phenomenal team effort, and to have Kristin as part of that too is, we're really lucky to have all you guys.
I'm not hearing you, Kristin.
Sure, she'll say something about how we're like herding cats, but you know.
All right, we can come. No, sorry, Kristin. Does the board have any questions about the specific request? Let me see if I can find the motion. Is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021 to approve the supplemental appropriation for additional funding for the Simsbury Spirit Council in the amount of $5,000 to support marketing and data collection and analysis efforts?
I move that.
Second.
Sean moved. Mike seconded. Is there anything else one wanted to add? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, ladies.
Thank you all very much. We very much appreciate your support.
Thank you. Good luck, guys. Appreciate your work.
Item J, I'm just pausing because all my lettering is off with the shuffling we did. Item J is the Business Development Incentives Policy Revamp. This is work done by the Economic Development Commission and with support from staff. The EDC has been reviewing the town's policy for providing tax incentives to businesses to support economic development. The changes include things like refining targeted industries, revising recommended payment amounts, requiring annual reporting for transparency, among other changes. And this board provided feedback at our meeting in December, which has been incorporated. And just to point out a couple of examples, under businesses targeted by this policy, it's it specifically calls out affordable housing units. That also specifies that the town can cap the amount for the total amount of any abatement. I wanted to see if there is anything, any questions any member of the board had, or if there's anything staff wanted to add.
Just a quick comment that, you know, again, I think that's a good add, especially on the affordable housing side. And given the discussion that Eric and I were part of recently, where perhaps those in the educational and intellectual space don't think we're taking this issue seriously. It's a small step, but these are little things, right? Where we're, we need to make sure that we're thinking about affordable housing in all of our policies and procedures. So that's a good change, guys. Nice job.
I have a question just in general. Is it documented somewhere like who we currently give or have given tax breaks or abatements to? Like, you know, we just talked about Ensign Beckford recently. Is there somewhere that shows things that we've done in the past somewhere just for reference, not here, obviously, but to kind of keep track?
Yeah, Wendy, that's a great question. So at least during my tenure, the Board of Selectmen has only approved two abatements. One was for the EBAD expansion and the second was for the historic preservation of the Ensign Mansion on Hot Meadow Street. We did have the full amount of documents. We did provide those online. They are still online and available for folks. But something we'll be doing this year at the Board of Finances request is just noting those particular abatements within the budget book as well, just to help draw some attention to that. There were some abatements done in the past for various businesses, but those were the only two current ones that we have at the moment.
Yeah, the other one that's still current, Maria, I think is the Ojekian property.
Oh, you know what? I will have to double check that. That may have a little bit of time left. Thank you, Sean.
That one does, because I was part of approving that. I think Mike was as well. So that one, that one is still running. The other ones I think were infrastructure improvements, which predated May. So I don't think there's any more on the tenure window. We used to have an infrastructure fund. So the Old Apollo's Pizza, you know, the Maple Tree, that complex, there was infrastructure funds used. I don't know if there was abatements, but there was infrastructure funds used for that back in the day, and there's been some other small projects, but.
Yeah. Hollowways at the North End.
Yep, same one. Yep. But again, yeah, we started to talk more about abatements when EDC revamped the policy because it was pretty antiquated, I think, eight or 10 years ago. And there was an effort to revamp it, much like we're doing right now. So. So Wendy, we haven't given out a lot of these, you know, and part of the problem is, is it's not really been known, right? And there, there's been a gap in terms of, you know, who was using it, who was talking about it. You know, Main Street obviously did, does an outstanding job in the economic development front. EDC was working on it. So that was a big part of the, some of the changes we've made is, you know, who's on first with economic development? How's the partnerships going? So I think the last few years, things have more come together, so in that space.
I am all for the transparency that comes along with putting all of these in one location. I also think along with the other abatements that we've given, you know, for something as long as anyone remembers regarding our firefighters and other, you know, first responders. You know, these are all for different reasons.
Yeah, senior tax abatement as well.
Also our seniors, yeah.
Yep. And then there's the veterans one, I believe, at the state statute level.
Before we go on to a vote on this policy, was there any other questions or anything anyone wanted to add? Is there a motion effective December 4th? Would it be December 14th, Maria, or February 8th? Probably February 8th, right? Sorry. I'm just reading the script that's in front of me.
Sorry, I was pushing the wrong button. You're correct, that is a typo. I apologize. It should be February 8th.
I don't know, Maria, you got a typo in here, geez.
I know.
Well, we brought it to you the first time on December 14th. This is the second time, though, so we should have updated that.
I'm getting my red pen out.
Good catch.
Is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021, to adopt the fee waiver in the tax abatement guidelines as presented, replacing the Business Development Incentives Policy?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? That motion carries. And finally, in Selectman Action, we had a discussion on SB 171. And Mike, I guess I could start with you since you asked that we added to the agenda.
Sure. I asked to put this on the agenda. I just found out about this last week, and my concern is twofold. One is that the way I read the bill, there is a threshold for an exemption for residential property. I read it that there is no exception, exemption for commercial property. So irregardless, it is an increased tax of one mil on that property, whether I'm misreading it or not, on the residential and commercial. And frankly, with the COVID and the stress that everyone's finances are under, I think this is ill timed at best. And definitely would, even if my reading is not accurate, will definitely stress out the business world in addition to the residential.
Yeah, Eric, if I could just jump in, I mean, yeah, I think some of our colleagues wrote back that the bill is not likely to pass, but I think it's one of dozens of quote unquote revenue bills that they call them. They don't call them taxes at the state level. They call them revenue bills, but they are taxes in different forms, the climate initiative. There's a bunch of other things down there. So again, it's important that we're paying attention because, you know, when you put your name on a bill and file it, whether it's going to get passed or not, it has the potential to, right? And we never know until the last day where this stuff ends up. Does it end up as a rat on the, on the, you know, on the budget implementer? There's a lot of ways this stuff gets socialized up front and then actually shows up later on. And our legislators are famous for shoving in a bunch of stuff into the implementer, which gets passed long after everybody realizes what goes on. So it's important that I think we're staying on top of this as local representatives, regardless of party. It's not because this is a Democrat or Republican idea, but these are, these are issues, I think, Mike, that you're right to be concerned about. You know, because we're hemming and hawing over, you know, a 1% or less tax increase, and this is an entire mil on top of what folks already pay. So, you know, I'm sure it's well intentioned what the money might go for. But, you know, again, you know, as the Board of Finance is rightly, rightly honed in on, you know, there's an affordability issue, not only in Simsbury, but in Connecticut. And, you know, we, Eric and I had a very spirited discussion with experts on taxes and affordable housing and otherwise the other night. But, you know, again, we're continuing to be solely dependent upon one revenue stream in this state, you know, taxing real property at the local level, and that continues to present challenges for us, right? And then if the state dips into our revenue pool as well, you know, it becomes even more problematic. So I'm sure, I'm sure the good senator is not going to push this. But again, we'll know more, right? When the governor's budget comes out?
I was just going to weigh in. I followed, I saw this a week or so ago, and I was, you know, was not in favor of the tax, like a tax, based on they're acting like it was a millionaire tax when it really was going to impact people with a home value of $430,000, which is not a millionaire, and that's a good chunk of the residents in Simsbury would be impacted by it when we're already kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. I do, I would though, want to know if they, you know, and I have to see the letter again, but you know, if we, if it's stated based on the current proposed amounts, you know, that I could vote. I can't say that if they changed it to tax property, you know, if it was like a million dollar exclusion, so the home value was, you know, a real millionaire type home, if I'd feel differently with this bill. I mean, I understand the commercial value, but the, the current rate on this value is ridiculous is where I'm going on that. So I would want to say if I, if we approve it, it's based on what they're proposing here. And if they happen to change the bill to a higher exemption, so it impacted people with much higher valued property, I might, I can't say for sure, but it might be, might be open to that. But as it stands right now, I'm not. And the other question I have is, so in the paper today, you know, it basically says it's going to be a no-go for Lamont. He's more interested in legalizing marijuana and sports betting. But I just was curious why now, like, is it, it's right, still pending? It's not in review right now with the, whatever the groups, I forgot what they're, the groups.
It's a submitted bill. It'll go to finance.
Yeah, it's pending review right now by Finance and Bonding Committee. So will it even get there if there's no support for it? Just as a question?
We'll have to wait and see. I mean, if it's got to get passed out of committee, right? And then they horse trade for the last two weeks when they pass stuff in terms of what gets raised, what doesn't. And sometimes things that are dead in February are revived in May. So, you know, they're never dead till, you know, till it's seen ADI. So, and again, and then you have to check the implementer because they're famous for putting dead ideas from bills in the implementer. And so they pass the budget and then they pass the implementer, and nobody ever pays attention to the implementer, but it's actually all the, where all the funding comes from. And there's a lot more to it, and other people can explain it better than that. But the implementer is famous for pet projects for individual senators and representatives to get stuff in there that all of a sudden becomes law. So you gotta, you gotta pay attention to the end, and it's all, it's all negotiating and horse trading they do down there until it comes out, so.
Okay, but if the letter, and again, I will, I hope we'll bring the letter up. If the letter is referencing the current state of proposed bill number 171, which actually does have the amount, the value amount of assessed value, which puts the house value at 430, then I totally agree with that. If the bill changed, then I think we'd have to revisit it, right?
Yeah. It depends on how they, I mean, again, they'll vote on it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a statewide mill rate. We don't get the money. It's, so we'll never, we'll never vote on.
Goes to towns and cities that need the money, I believe.
Yeah, so goes to, so it's much like the statewide car tax that failed miserably and they had to, you know, had to go back where the, you know, they.
I thought that the, I thought that the money, one of the articles mentioned, you know, diversion into the transportation fund, so.
Yeah.
Well, it gives me, it's going for good use, so I'm going to take that at like the value, the value that they're saying right now.
It's everybody's perception of good use, right?
Yeah, and then my point for bringing this up is that during this current, current economy, whether you are a residential home or a commercial business property, to increase the taxes for anything is, is, is not good. And we, we have no idea what this will actually be, what the legislation will actually look like, and that it won't be a rat, which is just a line in a bill somewhere at, in the last evening that the session is open. And I think my opposition is the bill in front of us. That's all we can deal with.
Well, Mike, when we go, you know, Mike, when we, the group, our group gets together and we sit there scratching our heads and asking, you know, they're our friends, our Board of Finance friends, we sit there at the end of the budget process, scratching our heads, how we can find $5,000 for the, for Main Street Partnership? And the response comes back from the Board of Finance, this is going to move the mill rate X and it's going to, and it's going to result in a Y increase to the taxpayer. Well, we're going, if that was to be implemented on top of our taxpayer base as it, just as that's out of the gate, we'd be talking about, you know, nondiscretionary increases to the town budget for the next three years or four years before you can even overcome that, you know, overcome that or absorb that. So I mean, it's just, we're working in reverse, we're going against ourselves to even support something like that.
Yeah.
Agreed.
But thank you for bringing it up tonight.
Yeah.
No, no problem. Thanks for the discussion.
So there's a letter that, that staff drafted that was, you know, shared with us this afternoon, and I didn't know the urgency and needing to endorse this tonight, or if that could be, you know, a more formal part of our packet in a couple of weeks.
My only concern, and the reason I'm raising this now, is I would like to see us vote on this tonight because I don't know where we're going to be in two weeks. And we may have a better idea, but the bill number 171 is what we have in front of us, and that's, that's what I would like to see us come out with. Not in favor of that.
I think it's important to, to, to do that. I think this is, this would be a challenge, like everybody has said, for our residents and our businesses. So I would like to look at this address it tonight.
Would it be worth putting the, the letter on the screen? Maria, is that something you can do?
Yeah, absolutely. Melissa, if you don't have it handy, I have it up and I could screen share it. And again, it's just a rough draft, just to sort of help get some dialogue going. If you like the general tone but want us to polish up, we're happy to go back and work on it further for you. Or if you like it, you know, as written, we can send that on your behalf. So let me just pull that up. I can do that, Maria. Oh, thank you, Melissa.
I do love the usage of the tax in there.
Of what, Sean?
Aggressive tax is the definition of.
That was a much nicer phrase than what I was coming up with, so I appreciate that.
I can't wait till we get to fight about the transportation climate initiative. Raises the gas tax, what, 17 cents?
To start.
Yeah. We'll do that another night, Eric.
Okay, thank you.
And again, this is, this is to our representatives, right? To Representative Hampton and Senator Wickers is the intent.
I would think that would be the appropriate place. I'm sorry, Maria.
Oh, I was just going to say, Melissa, would you mind scrolling up? We weren't sure if you might also want it to go to the Joint Committee. I think it's on finance, bonding, and, oh goodness, I've got it at the top of the letter.
That would make sense to me.
Finance, bonding, and revenue.
Yep. I think Senator Wickers is on there, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, they are, and John Hampton too.
I think that's good.
This letter, I think, strikes the right tone, and I appreciate the use of our local statistics. Was there any other feedback on this letter?
My, my only feedback is that it's as, as the bill's written today. Like, I don't know, I don't know my state legislature. If you made a change to a bill, do you make a new bill or would they update this with something else?
They'll pass an amendment at the time, and we won't know that for months.
Okay, so as it's written today is really what we're, we're saying.
Yeah, I think that's fair because it'll get an amendment if I remember my process correctly, Wendy. They would have to, they would, they would have to, they would have to file something different and then, and agree to that at the time. So there'd be a whole bunch of amendments to the bill, and they would pass that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. But you see what my point is?
Yeah, you know, I get you.
As it stands today, I'm all in, right?
I feel you, yeah. And this, this is no, no intention here to pin anybody down. You know, again, we can all change our minds as, as the process goes on, and that's okay. But, you know, as it stands today, I think that's all we're talking about.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if we have to call that out at all. That's all.
Eric and Maria, you both had asked if there's anything you would change. I think the letter's good. I think talking about the residents we have with unemployment claims is good. I'm wondering if it would be any benefit to add the businesses that we have that are on a tax waiver. They've requested.
Oh, yeah, that's a good call out, Jackie.
It's a great idea.
Okay.
We have those stats, Jackie. That's a really good suggestion. We can definitely add that.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a motion to endorse this letter in opposition to SB 171?
I'll, I'll make that with just the amendment that as it stands today, just to address Wendy's concern.
Yeah.
As it stands today with the amendment that Jackie was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And thank you so much.
Thank you very much, folks.
That was it.
Okay. All right, that concludes Selectman Action. Appointments and resignations. Is there a motion effective February 8th, 2021, to appoint Shari Chester Anderson as a regular member of the Spirit Council with a term to expire on December 6th, 2021? to appoint Shari Chester Anderson as a regular member of the Spirit Council with a term to expire on December sixth, 2021?
So moved.
Second that.
Make second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion effective February eighth, 2021 to appoint Holly McGrath as a regular member of the Library Board of Trustees with a term expiring on December sixth, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion effective February eighth, uh, 2021 to appoint Robin Batchelder as a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission with the term ending January one, 2025?
So moved.
I'll move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion effective February eighth, 2021 to appoint Joanne Cohen as a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission with a term ending January one, 2023?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There a motion effective February eighth, 2021 to move Victor Bible III from an alternate member of the Aging and Disability Commission to a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission with a term ending January one, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
I think, I think Wendy just eclipsed you there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion effective February eighth, 2021 to appoint Mary T. Hinnault as an alternate member of the Aging and Disability Commission with a term ending January one, 2022?
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion effective February eighth, 2021 to reappoint Michael R. Jennings as a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission with a term ending on January first, 2025?
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion effective February eighth, 2021 to reappoint Joanne M. Hogan as a regular member of the Building Code Board of Appeals with a term ending on January first, 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Eric, Sean, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There a motion effective February eighth, 2021 to reappoint Charles A. Warren Jr. as a regular member of the Building Code Board of Appeals with a term ending on January one, 2026?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
I heard Wendy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion effective February eighth, 2021 to appoint Chad S. Alfred as an alternate member of the Historic District Commission with a term ending January first, 2023?
So moved. Second.
I heard Chris and then Sean.
Whoa. Walk me up, Chris.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll tell him that Chris was very enthusiastic. Is there a motion effective February eighth, uh, 2021 to reappoint Patricia S. Um, Hipa, and I hope I'm not mispronouncing her last name as a regular member of the Historic District Commission with a term ending on January first, 2026?
So moved.
That was Jackie. Sean, was that a second?
The second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And that concludes our appointments and resignations. Do I dare ask for a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-fifth? Now, we don't, um, is there any feedback on the minutes?
They're beautiful.
Wonderful.
And they will stand. Are there any selectmen liaison and subcommittee reports?
I, I could just relay a couple of Board of Ed things. It's always hard because the Board of Ed meeting is always after our last meeting. So I write things down and then there was technical difficulties. So then I come to this and it's anyhow. Um, the Tooten Hills has a new principal and it's Anjanette Belmonte. Um, I think she's been in the school system. If you want to read her bio, it's in the agenda. And then they, they did talk about the budget. I don't know if Amy's still here and I, I think this is what they said, the personnel that they did, they went through the personnel budget. I believe it came in at two point five or something like that increase for next year. Oh, it's a, I could be wrong, but I think it was over the guidance from Board of Finance. And I couldn't find the documents that they had, but that was the number that I remembered and that's what I'm sharing. And then for the capital improvement project, so, you know, we've been talking about just in general, the Latimer Lane, Henry James, sixty-five million dollar thing. And they were in the Tecton Task Force meetings, they had talked about they could just do the Latimer as a starting place. And it sounded like from the last Board of Ed meeting that Matt was leaning that way, that they would pull the Latimer out as the starting point, which was the thirty-four million. Um, and then hold off on the Henry James piece because that could be done separately. So that makes things a little different, how we're going to look at them. That's it.
Other, other liaison reports? Sean?
Eric, I don't know if the council liaison, I don't know if you want to just tag team this, but you know, Eric and I sat in as panelists. What, last week?
Uh, yeah, last Thursday.
Last Thursday, yeah. Um, it feels like yesterday with, uh, a really, um, interesting, interesting discussion, I thought, on, on affordable housing in town put on by the Spirit Council. I know many of you guys were there, but for the folks at home, if you haven't had a chance to see it, SCTV did tape it. I believe it is available, um, for review. I thought some really informative, um, perspective from two, two experts upfront. And then Eric, Bill Rice and myself as, you know, the quote unquote local experts. Some interesting perspective from residents in terms of um, how we view affordable housing and, and some different issues and folks, you know, it, uh, it kind of bounced all over the place uh, in terms of topic and perspective. But, you know, at the end of the day, what, Eric, I think there was eighty-nine folks that signed up. Uh, a lot of, a lot of engagement. Um, again, regardless of how people feel about, on the political spectrum, I thought it was a win for the Spirit Council. Now I'm having again, two experts come in uh, and, and talk on the topic and then to engage so many residents. I think at one point we joked, um, unfortunately, that we have more engagement on the Affordable Housing Forum than we do at the budget. Which again, is really good that, that we had that level of engagement. I just wish we would for the hundred million dollar thing that we all talk about every year as well. Um, but, uh, you know, there was, uh, there was some low points in terms of blaming communities like ours. And I think some folks may have felt like um, there was a bit of a biased opinion in terms of, you know, we're all sitting around conspiring in this town. Um, I, I don't feel that way, but I can empathize with the perspective of others that may not know um, all of us volunteers and what we're here for, that, you know, um, we've probably got some work to do. So again, I applaud you guys, um, for, for, um, moving forward, not only on the tax abatement policy tonight, but also, you know, funding the Spirit Council, because I think we're putting our money where our mouth is, maybe in really small steps. Um, nonetheless, steps going forward, um, to, to continue to make this a phenomenal community. Um, and if we have flaws, um, let's, let's, let's work on them. So, um, I don't know, Eric, if you had any thoughts on it, but I, again, I was, I was honored to be a part of the discussion.
Yeah, I was too. My only reflection, thinking back on it was, I think it did a nice job outlining the problem. But I think that there's going to be more opportunity to, to really dig into what the solutions are going to look like.
Yep.
One of the, the panelists in particular who, you know, took a lot of, um, heat in the discussion had a, you know, a rather, you know, polarizing point of view. Um, but I think it is good and challenging communities like Simsbury to really look hard and think about the, um, decisions we've made with intended and unintended consequences and really look hard at the tools that we have to be able to move our community in a more equitable direction. So I look forward to further conversations about where we can go from here.
Yep.
Um, any other, um, selectmen liaison or subcommittee reports? Okay, let me see where we're at. Um, was there anything under the communication section anyone had questions about?
Eric, just real, just real quick, this is just simply informational. As, as I was reading through the, the building official agreement. I've got no doubt that it's fantastic and it's working. Uh, my head started to explode as I tried to like diagram out who goes where, when and stuff. And so I just got to give up. Uh, but I'm just curious, maybe if Mike is still on the phone, I don't know if he's is, but, um, like, I, I, how, how busy are, are, are we? Are we at the point, are we at a, at a perfect fifty fifty share? Or is there, you know, at some point, is there a concern that activity may uh, require us to, the trend where the activity may require us to, to, to in-house this again, or seek another town with less balance? So I'm just kind of curious, what's the say, the, the, the status of activity out there, Maria, as relative to the, uh, this position?
Yeah, that's a great question, Chris. Um, you know, typically in, in what we're seeing for ordinary circumstances, it's about a sixty forty split um, between time spent here versus time spent in Bloomfield. Um, however, um, I would say that both departments in both towns have worked really well with each other and have been very flexible. So, you know, if one town for some reason has a flood of activity, you know, they may shift the hours. Um, or if there's perhaps a staffing issue, you know, somebody's on vacation, maybe somebody needs to take a brief, uh, medical leap of absence. But again, they've been really terrific about working collaboratively to help with those types of scheduling needs. Um, and I would say that, um, you know, if in fact we reached a point where we were having difficulty, um, keeping, keeping up with inspections, we would probably want to revisit, you know, the agreement to potentially look at, um, you know, splitting time differently or perhaps trying to, to go out on our own. Um, you know, one of the challenges is, you know, sometimes that, that peak volume isn't, isn't always there, um, in the long term to sustain, um, a second full-time person. Um, but one of the other challenges that we do have that affects sort of staffing and scheduling um, is that there is a real shortage of certified building officials and assistant building officials in Connecticut. And so oftentimes towns are just swapping people and sharing people. Um, and so, um, it's oftentimes hard to fill those positions, especially if we're just looking for somebody, say, for example, like on a temporary basis. It can be very challenging. So, um, again, I've been very appreciative and grateful to Mike and his counterpart for just being so good about sharing that, that position and scheduling.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm all, I'm, I'm, I'm all for pushing the discomfort, the discomforting conversation around regionalization and shared. It seems like nobody, nobody above uh, the local level like us will actually take up the banner of it, just, you know, uncomfortable conversation. So.
No, it's true, Chris. It's, it's actually something, you know, I brought this up, uh, many years ago to the municipal services committee at CROG as a suggestion, because there is such a shortage of building officials in the state of Connecticut. And it's one of the few things at a local level that we do that's applicable. The same code is applicable to all towns.
All towns.
So they're all enforcing the same code. It doesn't matter if you work the same building code, right? It doesn't matter if you work in Simsbury, if you work for the city of Hartford, if you work for Canton. It's the same building code. And because there is such a shortage, I had, you know, suggested to CROG that it might be, even if it wasn't sharing permanent staff, that they had essentially, um, you know, temporary staff that they retained and then could contract out with communities when we have retirement, staffing transitions, uptake and activity. Could they then, you know, hire those people out to municipalities to do that work? I thought it was a great idea. I know our building official has also, uh, made similar suggestions over the years and that has not, um, regrettably, that has not gained any traction. But I think that would be a fabulous solution, um, both for that and for us.
Maria, this is a letter you want us to endorse, put it in front of us.
I may do that in the future. I'm pretty passionate about this topic.
So thanks for bringing it up, Chris. Passing one seventy-one.